For being here, we really, really appreciate it and we're so excited to have you here. And there's, there's really just no better way to end, to end the, the semester on the history of Boston. Can you see me? You can't, sorry. No better way to end the, a semester on the history of Boston than to talk about the future of Boston with, with the president of the city council, right? And with somebody in city government who has been dedicated to activism and to, to city government as a career to tell us about, about the, the future of Boston. And I know the students have a lot of, a lot of things to ask. Okay. But first I have to tell you about a little bit of a tradition in this class. It's been a, a very strange semester. These are students, all students who were supposed to be in a study abroad program in various study abroad programs around the country. And so those were canceled, except for Dublin. Dublin was the only site that, that ran. But all, all these students were in, in different locations. And so the university sort of rapidly put together a Boston focused curriculum that would be a sort of like a study abroad program in, in Boston, where they would focus their curriculum on questions about Boston. And this is our history of Boston class. So to try and, because I'm not an expert on the history of Boston, I have been conscripting people who know much more than me to talk to the class. And to try and build some community, what I've been doing is a weekly commemorative mug, a mug for, for each speaker. We, we, I've created a mug. So if all things fail in my career, I'm going to pursue a job in mug design. And then, so what we do is at the end of the class, the speaker, the speaker gives us a trivia question. And then they send me their, their answers and the correct one, we do a little game for, which involves guessing hockey numbers. And, and one of the students wins a mug and one goes to the speaker and I collect, collect, collect one. So you are our last, our last speaker. And so you are our last mug. Mine has coffee in it. And I know I spoke to somebody in your office, Ki, Kiara. And I said, I said, you know, I'd like to give President Janey a mug, a gift, right? And I didn't mean to run afoul of, of policies on gift giving or anything. But this is what I, this is what I meant. You know, if, and if it's allowed, I will actually, I was telling the students, I will be, after this, I will be at the JFK building close by to you because I have my citizenship interview and exam at one o'clock this afternoon. So you, you will not be gaining, you, you'll, I, I live in West Roxbury. So unfortunately, in my case, you won't be gaining a constituent. But I'm sure there are many ways that, that I can, that I can help out and, and support your causes as a new citizen. Hopefully if I pass. So here is our mug and we're going to do this a little bit differently. Like I said, ordinarily, we do the trivia question at the end. And, and then they send me the questions, but since this is our last class, we are going to do a rapid fire trivia question. Okay? So I'm going to show the mug. All right. And then I'm going to ask a trivia question about the mug. Okay, students, pay attention. All right. And what we're going to do is the first, the first person to put the answer in the chat wins it. Does that sound fair? Sort of Jeopardy style?
I don't have to guess. It's the student.
You don't have, you, you already won. You get one. And I have two actually for, for your office, for one for Kiara, two. If, if you could accept it, I don't know what, if I can loan you.
The rule is gifts of $50. It has to be under $50.
I don't want to.
I assume the coffee mug is.
It was $8. It was $8. I don't, I don't want to tell the students. I don't want to tell the students, you know, what a good deal I'm getting on these mugs, but this one was, this one was $8. And it depends on, you know, like your promotion code and how many you order. But this one I can attest was $8. Because also I bought more than ordinarily, ordinary. But my, my daughter, because we get these box from zazzle.com every week. And my daughter, at one point asked me, are you spending all of your money as a professor on mugs? Like, quiet. No. So yes, so I'm going to show you the mug and then I'm going to ask a question about it. And the first to get it gets, gets the mug. Okay. So I'm going to start with the back, the back. We have two. I have to move my head, otherwise it focuses on my head. But so we have two photos. Does that focus?
It's blurry.
Too close.
Too close. So one, one is you, President Janey at the mural, the faces of Dudley Square mural. Do you see that? You're going to like this one even better. I, I, I hope. This is you. This is right outside my office, actually.
Oh, yes. That's pretty recent. In fact, that's a few weeks ago.
Yeah, this is you and your granddaughter, right?
That is.
With.
We're fighting for those trees.
Yeah. And which, which, like I said, well, you can't quite see Melnea from here, but, but there, it's right there. If I turn my head that way, you can see the trees, which I hope you save because they're beautiful trees. And I, I think that I'm, you know, there are too, too many trees in the city being removed, period. But I'm fighting for trees in West Roxbury, but that's also a failing battle. But I'm not saying yours is, I'm saying mine is. So those are, that's the, that's the back. Now, the front is where the trivia question is. This is a beautiful mural.
Oh, I love it.
Really beautiful mural. And I have hints if it takes a while, if it takes more than 10 seconds for people to get it. So this is a gorgeous mural.
If you just move it in front of your face instead of leaning down, it'll probably be easier.
Good advice. And I'll cover my face too. Can you see it?
Yep.
Okay. So the trivia question is, who is the artist who painted the tree? I painted a tree. Who is the artist who painted the mural?
I know.
Of course you know. You get yours. You get yours automatically. Who is the artist who painted it? And oh, wait, you didn't get the second part. You didn't get the second part. And I want to know, I want the address. I want to know where that is. All right, Ryder got Ryder.
Oh, that's too exact. Somebody Googled that.
It's, that's okay. That's allowed because they're not going to know it. I'm allowing that. Rapid research is allowed.
Excellent.
Yeah. Very good. Yes. Yes. Are you here? Wait, Ryder. So say what it is.
Well, it was made by Robert Pulback Gibbs and it's, it's near the public library, Boston.
It, it's, it's just in Dorchester. Yeah, Grove Hall in Dorchester, like right by the Dorchester Roxbury. Well, there's no border, but that, that area on 324 Blue Hill Avenue. That is correct. Commemorative, commemorative coffee is the best. So that is coming to you. President Janey, which like I said, I'm actually delighted to drop, if I'm allowed, I'm delighted to drop it off today because I will be.
That would be great if you, if you could. That would be great. The council is closed, but I'm sure if you left it with security, they would get it to me.
Oh, that's so wonderful.
I will be there in the building tomorrow.
That's so wonderful. So, and, and like I said, we've had, and I, I didn't, I also didn't mention, I should have gotten another, I should get another one for scale. So this is, this is our usual mug size. This is one we did for, for Matt Delmont came to our class from Dartmouth to talk about segregation and integration in Boston. This has a nice picture of Ellen Jackson and Mayor White at Freedom House. It's a beautiful mug, but look, I went all out for the last one. I don't know if you can see the scale. I got the extra large for, for, for our last, for our last session. I said, you know what? I'm going to get the extra large mug.
Love it. Thank you. I'm very grateful.
Have my extra large coffee. It's a beautiful one. Well, so thank you so much for coming and congratulations Ryder. Make a time to come by Renaissance Park to pick it up.
Can I go there this afternoon? Would that work?
Absolutely. Oh, wait. I was about to say you absolutely can. No, ordinarily you can, but this afternoon you can't. But tomorrow, we'll make an arrangement in any event. Great. So that was wonderful. And wait, Ryder, how did you get it? Did you know?
I just like, I searched it because.
But you searched it based on the, how did you, what did you write down?
I just searched like murals in Boston and that came up.
Wow. You got that really fast. And I mean, I, so I should add, my hint was going to be that the same artist has two murals in walking distance from Northeastern, right? So two breathe life, this is a breathe life murals he calls and calls them. And I think there are three in the series, but two of them are really close to Northeastern. One is on Tremont. I'm pointing, but you don't actually know which direction that is. Just up Tremont, there's a big one and one is on Madison, is on the wall of Madison Park. The high school, really right across from my office here. So if you want to, you want to see one of these murals in person, you can just walk, walk over and they're, they're really gorgeous and really, really neat. Okay. So I want to introduce President Janey and tell you a little bit, a little bit about her before asking her a few questions and also turning it over to you because I know you students, I know you want to ask some questions as well. So Kim Janey is city councillor for District Seven, which includes Roxbury and parts of Dorchester and Fenway area, as well as the South End. She's currently president of the Boston City Council. She grew up in Roxbury. She's a product of, you know, many of the processes that we've talked about in this class, right? She's a product of the New School for Children, which was a school started by black parents. And then went to, went to Boston Public Schools and was part of the desegregation through busing. First phase as well as using the Metco program. So, you know, you are, you are all familiar sort of with, with to what extent President Janey really experienced many of the things that we've talked about in this class. She worked for many years in community organizing, in educational advocacy and voting rights. And especially child advocacy and immediately before becoming a member of city council, was the senior project director at Massachusetts Advocates for Children, which was, it's a child advocacy outfit. So this is a person who's, who's really devoted herself to the city, to community activism and organizing and to children as well as to public service. And I hope she can be a model for all of you idealistic young people. Well, I hope despite the current situation are still idealistic. So I thought, you know, just to start, President Janey, maybe you could just tell us a little bit about yourself. I left out, I did give some of the biographical details, but, but not all of them. And so I thought maybe you could tell us a little bit about yourself and how you became interested in public service.
Wow. Well, first let me say thank you for the invitation. It is really great to be here with you. I always love to, to speak to young people whenever I can. I find you guys are always right at the forefront of the change that we seek. And so I'm grateful for the activism of young people all across our city. Northeastern has a special place in my heart. It also has a special place on my list of things to advocate around. And there are quite a few issues that I have with Northeastern, but it has nothing to do with the students at Northeastern. Northeastern has a special place in my heart because my father graduated from Northeastern. And he, like I'm sure many of you, was very active. And he went to Northeastern at a time when it was important to be very active around what was happening in our city and certainly in our nation. I'm also deeply grateful that you started this conversation grounding us in, in art and talking about the art of Pro Black in his Breathe Life series. I find that now more than ever, we need one to, to celebrate the arts. And this series in particular, Breathe Life, this is at a time when so many of us are finding it very difficult to breathe. And I think focusing on the arts and grounding us in the arts is important because the arts have played an important role in documenting the history and the story of Boston, particularly black Boston. So I really appreciate the mug and I appreciate you kind of starting there. I, I hear that I'm last in the series and I'm glad that you guys have saved the best for last.
Closer. You're the closer.
Closer. I hope that you've had Byron Rushing before you. He is a great local Boston historian and I had the pleasure of seeing Representative Rushing in a city council hearing yesterday. And again, talking about how we commemorate the history in Boston and making sure that when we do tell the story, that it is inclusive. And he challenged us, he challenged us because that conversation was centered around the 250th anniversary of this country. And the fact that that's the starting point and, and then we're trying to add diversity to that is problematic. So anyway, I am really grateful to be here. I'm going to quickly tell you a little bit about myself and how I have experienced Boston and why I decided to run for office. And I really hope that the vast majority of our conversation will be a dialogue Q and A where we can just have a conversation together. So as was already pointed out, I'm, I'm born and raised here in Rock, in, in Boston. I have very deep roots in Roxbury and the South End. My family's been in Roxbury for six generations now. That photograph of me and my granddaughter standing in front of the tree on Melnea Cass Boulevard. She is sixth generation Roxbury and she is one of the many reasons that I decided to run for office. So many folks of her age, of her generation who call Roxbury home now may not be able to do so in the future. I also have very strong ties to the South End on my mother's side of the family. That is where my, my family is from. Her, her grandmother had a brownstone there on West Canton Street, my great grandparents bought in the 1920s. But in the 1980s, they were gentrified out of the South End. So again, we see the change in demographic in different neighborhoods. And I'm sure you guys have discussed that. But as a little girl, my parents, my parents came of age during the civil rights movement of the 1960s. I was born into that civil rights movement. And at a very young age, my very first experience outside of the, my parents' home to go to school, to get an education was at New School for Children, as was mentioned. This was a community school organized by black leaders, black parents, black activists in Boston, who were fed up with the fact that they could not get a good quality education for their children in Boston Public Schools. And so we saw black, the black community organizing. Many folks went to the courts. They went to the NAACP. They organized that way. And we saw a court case come, a federal court case, the Garity Order came down. I was actually bussed in the second phase of busing, not the first phase.
I'm sorry.
Phase was 1974. I'm sure you guys studied that in great detail. Two years later was the second phase of busing. And I was bussed to Charlestown at 11 years old. But first was New School for Children. I got a firm foundation on what it meant to be a little black girl growing up in Boston, growing up in America. And that was an important foundation for kindergarten and first grade. I then went into Boston Public Schools. Boston Public Schools tried to retain me, hold me back a grade because I went to New School for Children. But my parents fought for me. They interjected and I saw firsthand the lessons of parent voice and parent advocacy. So I was able to start BPS in second grade because my parents fought for me and I excelled all through elementary school. I was an honor, honor roll student. And then in sixth grade, I was bussed to Charlestown during the second phase of busing. I'm 11 years old, charged with the responsibility of integrating the Boston Public Schools. This experience for many folks who were bussed in the, the seventies in Boston was very traumatic. Fortunately for me, again, my parents continued to fight for me and for better educational opportunities. And by eighth grade, I was enrolled in the Metco program and I ended up graduating from Reading Public Schools. So I've had lots of different experiences in my K through 12 education that informed my thinking as a child advocate, as an education activist and as a city councillor. And it has given me a, a foundation from which to work from. It also allowed me to experience Boston and, and see firsthand systemic racism play out. And I experienced that through the education that I received as a young girl. And none of those experiences were ideal, but they were all very important in terms of and shaping who I am, but also in terms of telling the story of Boston. Quite frankly, telling the story of black resistance in the form of, of, of going to court and fighting for quality education for black students systemically in terms of just organizing, direct action organizing and, and creating your own opportunities. Those are all forms of black excellence and black resistance. And so those are important parts of Boston's history that aren't really told. It's not told. This history, I think, is told in college classrooms across the city of Boston. So Northeastern, maybe Harvard, BU may kind of step into this history. But we really need to do a much better job of telling the history and making sure that Boston students, K through 12, understand this history. And we had another hearing yesterday that talked about that. So separate from commemorating the 250th anniversary and how we make sure that that narrative is much more inclusive, we also had a discussion around the curriculum in BPS and specifically ethnic studies. And I share that because I think part of the challenge is we think about the history in Boston and the changing demographics and, and how the city has transformed over, you know, our long history, 400 year history almost for the city of Boston and the neighborhood of Roxbury. We've seen lots of changes. Now, one, one of the things that came out of the ethnic studies hearing and important to, to ground ourselves in as we tell the story and the narrative of Boston is who gets to tell the story and whose story are we telling, right? And so there is a quote that I shared and I will quickly share it with you if I can find that quote. Because it is.
You're going to read it or you don't?
I will, I will read it. It's a, it's a quick, it's a quick quote.
No, no problem. I just, I, I've made you the co-host should you decide.
Oh, should I need to share this thing? No. And that would take too long. So we won't.
Well, you have capabilities.
This quote is an African proverb and it, and it pretty much says, until the story of the hunt is told by the lion, the tale of the hunt will always glorify the hunter. And that is the challenge that we find ourselves in as we, as we examine our own history in the city of Boston, as we look at our history as a nation, as we try to tell that story through college courses, through curriculum in BPS, is whose story and who gets to tell it? For me and how I've tried to take all of these experiences and use them and leverage them as a city councillor, I am always mindful of the spaces that I am in and who, who is, who is in those spaces. And, you know, if I am in a space that doesn't look like Boston and the real Boston, true Boston, it's important that we acknowledge that and we call that out. Particularly when we're talking about decision-making tables. Decision-making tables must be diverse and they must include folks from different walks of life. Because who is at the table not only determines what is served, but who gets to eat. And so it is really important that we are doing everything we can to create these diverse spaces. And it's particularly important as we think about the history of Boston and the changing demographics of our neighborhood and, and changing power, quite frankly. What wasn't said yet is that I am president, yes, but I'm president of the most diverse city council in Boston's history. For the very first time, this city council is a majority people of color. And it's a majority women council. We have our first Latina ever on the council. We have the first openly gay woman on the council. And, and this matters because diversity matters, representation matters. But it's the lived experiences that we bring and the lens that we bring to this work that has shaped this work, I think, in a very different kind of way.
Yeah. It's, I mean, this is, thank you so much for that wonderful, wonderful introduction. And, and there's so, there's so much there. I, I have to resist, I have to resist taking, you know, taking us way off course. But, you know, one of the things you mentioned in terms of representation and, and the, and, and the importance of teaching the history, the local, all aspects of the local history was, you know, I had one of my colleagues, Ted Lansmark. I had, we had, I had did an interview with him, which I shared with, with the students, sort of pre-recorded. But, you know, my idea was he, he was the, the, the victim in this attack at City Hall that was photographed. That became this Pulitzer Prize winning photo, the, the soiling of old glory. So my, my idea was that, you know, okay, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about what happened. You know, but what Professor Lansmark really wanted to talk about is, you know, what, what I was there to do was to work. He was working on behalf of black economic empowerment within the city at the time of the attack. And that's what he was going to do. He had a meeting on, on, to, to expand city contracts for construction for more minority owned businesses.
And that's one of my huge, my, one of my top priorities.
Yeah. And, you know, I, it was really good that, you know, he sort of took us away from this, the conversation of the focus of this, these, the sort of narrow issue, right? Of let's say, the most obvious forms of resistance to segregation, right? Like a physical attack and resistance to busing and, and white flight. And all, you know, all of these things that we know of to focus more on the question of, you know, how blacks within the city have been systematically economically disenfranchised. And that was a really, really important part of our conversation. And, and, and I think you're completely right that, that we need to, you need to have the whole picture for students learning about Boston. You know, it can't be about, let's say, the, the revolution, you know, the American Revolution in the 18th century. The abolitionist movement in the 19th century, wherever the focus is on Boston's role in, in advocating, advocating for emancipation of the slaves. And then, and then this sort of 1970s busing fiasco or whatever you want to call it, which is, which was a sort of violent resistance to integration. That, that's, that those are the only focuses or Foci, right? That, you know, there's so much else going on within the communities themselves and the advocacy of the, the communities themselves. And, and, you know, there's, there's other things going on in general. One, one thing that surprised me, you might be interested, but, you know, we did a, a class early on in the semester on slavery in Boston. And I, I thought for sure, I did a little online poll and I thought for sure, you know, asking students, you know, did you essentially, did you think there was slavery? Were, were you surprised to learn that there was slavery in Boston? Did you know about slavery in that, you know, that people held slaves in Boston and slavery was part of Boston's economy? Did you know that Boston was built on the slave trade? Sort of assess the basic knowledge of people's understanding of slavery and the role of slavery within Boston. And, and actually that poll was much more favorable than I thought of it. You know, the students, the majority of them were aware of the extent of Boston's role in the slave trade and slavery in Boston. So whereas I thought, you know, the focus would have been of knowledge of, on, on abolition, let's say, the way it's being. let's say, the way it's being, the way it's being taught. So that was maybe one, one hopeful part. And, you know, when, when Matt Delmont came to talk about resistance to integration, his big point, which they had to write an essay about, was that, which, you know, your parents were a part of, which is that with all the focus on 1974, what gets lost is the long history of the civil rights movement in Boston leading up to that point. That the Garrity decision was essentially a final acknowledgement of the need for civil equality for blacks in the cities that came after, you know, decades of black advocacy.
So centuries, so centuries. So let, let, so a couple of points I would just like to make. So one, the, the, the fight for quality education for black families in this city goes back, it dates to the, the beginning of this country, quite frankly. It's, it's a hundred years fight. This is not, we can go back to Sarah Roberts. Five years old, when her father had to sue to get her, to try to get her into a school. She had to walk past a school close to her home that was designated for white students to continue on to a low-quality school and her father sued. So this fight is centuries old. That's the first thing. The second thing is we can't start talking about the history of this country with the American Revolution. What it does is it erases that this land was stolen and it was stolen violently. Okay. And that people were killed, that there was a genocide, the people were raped. So there needs to be acknowledgement of that. It needs, there needs to be acknowledgement that the university that you attend sits on stolen land and was probably built through wealth that was accumulated through the slave trade. So that's one thing that we all have to acknowledge. Second, the third thing that I would say, so one is indigenous people were here. The other thing that I would say is it is so important that, that we, that we're careful with language. Okay. And I know it's, that people often talk about slaves. These are people who were enslaved. When you talk about slaves, it's easy to think, well, that's their lot in life. And slaves are just slaves. These are not slaves. These are people who were stolen and who were violently, again, enslaved against their will. Their language was stolen, their culture was stolen, et cetera, et cetera. These things we are still living with today. And so language is important for me. I, I use the term enslaved, people who were enslaved. Whether we're talking about Africans who were enslaved or their descendants who were then enslaved.
And indigenous people enslaved as well. We, we learned about in the class too.
Exactly. And so, you know, there are institutions all around us that were built with that wealth. The fact that there is a, a quarter of a million dollar wealth gap in the city of Boston between black households and white households, where the net worth of black households is $8 versus $247,500 for white households is not by accident. We didn't get here by accident. We got there through policy and laws that were created by Congress, by our courts and by city councils all across the country. There are 400 years of receipts. This is well documented. You guys are probably reading The Color of Law. It's well documented how we got here.
I considered assigning The Color of Law, but, but I, I didn't only because I signed a lot of other stuff as well.
There's a lot of good stuff.
But, but I did, I mean, this was, this was something we discussed. And, and, and not only that, but especially the last few weeks. You know, last week we talked about policing all week. We had Governor Dukakis on Tuesday and then Rod Brunson, my colleague, on, on Friday. So we talked about policing all week and really, you know, since, you know, since, well, maybe the past quarter of the, of the class, talking about, about these issues. I mean, things that I've been really emphasizing with the students is the extent to which Boston is still a segregated city and, and actually is more so and arguably becoming more so over time. But also the continued systemic discrimination that, within the city that, that is being documented. So we talked about, we talked about the disparity in sentencing within the city and within the state of Massachusetts between white and black and Latino offenders. And I also keep mentioning, I'm sure you saw the Suffolk University study on rental discrimination from, it's probably about August, something like that, that came out, showed it, it was, it's just-
Before I was a counselor, I dabbled in testing. So I was one of those testers. I don't know that I was one of those testers when they were, you know, for the data that they used for their study.
Were you showed an apartment?
Oh, I was showed lots of apartments back when I was doing testing. Yep, absolutely.
The results were that, that it was over 40% more difficult just to get shown an apartment by an agent, you know, if you were in person, black or you had a black sounding name.
Yeah. So it's, it's not surprising to me. I, I know lots of people were shocked by that. I think part of the challenge that we find ourselves in is we think about racism in the context of the boogeyman. And so we think about racism in the context of who, who's a good person and who's a bad person and who's nice and who do racist things by leaving a noose in your locker or burning a cross on your lawn. When in fact, the way racism works, particularly systemic racism, is that there are lots of good people who don't think that they're racist, who are operating in systems and they are making decisions. Okay. And, and that's how racism works. Good people who think, who don't think that they have a problem, who are making decisions and those decisions have grave consequences for, for the future of people, which is why it is so important that we have more people, more people of color, more women, more LGBTQ, more folks who are running for, people with disabilities who are running for elected office, who are winning and who are able to sit around these decision-making tables.
Yeah, completely agree. So I am going to abandon my, the questions that I have prepared for you to give more time to the students to ask questions who really want. And especially actually, you know, you've, you've answered some of them in terms of, it's one of the questions I was going to ask you about, about essentially how to move, how to commemorate and, and what to do about the, the history of injustice within the city. And, you know, you, I think have really answered that, that through action and through, through diversity and decision-making, which is great. But I'm going to start with Anna Yerxa, who has a question for you.
Hi, I'm Anna and my question is, how has your experience of being a young mother helped you become an advocate for children and equity in education?
Oh, thank you for that question. I think she was the driving force. So I had my daughter while I was still in high school and it was at a time when there weren't as many supports, there weren't any supports, certainly not in high school, not in my school. She became, once I graduated high school, she became, I had to go straight to work to take care of her. And it was years later before I would go to college. But she became the reason, I think, that I got into child advocacy. She, you know, I got connected to the Children's Defense Fund. I understood, I think, early on that, that her success as a young person was connected to the, the success of other young people around her and that it wasn't enough for me to fight just for her. But I had to fight for other little girls and for little boys as well.
This is something, yeah, I, I think hopefully you'll all, all appreciate about how, how your whole perspective about the future of our place on earth changes when you have, have children, right? And, you know, model citizens like President Janey, go and do something about it. And I, and I hope you guys all do the same. So, and I'm going to be a citizen too, maybe if I pass. Michael Amador has a question for you.
Hi, I'm Michael. My question is that this year systemic racism has really become a major topic. And my question to you was, what is your current thoughts on policing in Boston? And what are your, also your thoughts on defunding the police? Because in our, in our conversation with Senator Dukakis, he opposed the idea of defunding the police. And he thought more of community policing was the solution.
Thank you for that question. So the first thing I'll say is the, the terminology defund the police. I think it means different things to different people. So it's important to just be clear about what we mean when we say defund the police. Earlier this year on June 19th, which is Juneteenth, I delivered a five-page letter to the mayor of Boston outlining a black and brown agenda or a place that we should start. And the, there was a whole page dedicated to police reforms. And just a page, there was a five-page letter because it's important that we acknowledge that at this time in our nation's history, while it is critically important that we deal with policing and criminal justice reform, that we acknowledge that that is not the end, that there is so much more that we also need to address. Because even if we passed, you know, all of the wonderful reforms that, that progressives and folks, social justice warriors want to see, the reality is that there is still that knee on the neck when it comes to the economics and, and, and getting access, equitable access to all of the things that it means to, to live in a great city like Boston or a great nation like the United States. So I, my feelings about this are all outlined in this letter and I'd love to share it. If I could, at some point, I'm going to try to locate it and get it into your chat. But quite, quite frankly, I think that too much is put on police. That is not about policing. So policing in my mind should be about solving crimes and how we are thinking about public safety. Now, we have invested in the city of Boston, I'll speak, I can't speak to other municipalities, more and more and more and more money in policing. And yet, people in my community don't feel safer. In fact, they don't, the police don't make them feel safe at all. So we have to think about this, this issue. We are pouring more money into a system that continues to harass poor black and brown folks. Boston will say that Boston is different. You know, the Boston Police Department's a national model, et cetera, et cetera. No one's immune from systemic racism. If you haven't seen Trial Four, please watch it. That history, Trial Four, it's a Netflix original series that highlights the criminal justice system right here in our city through the Sean Ellis case.
Really?
Yes. Who was a 19-year-old black kid in the city of Boston who got caught up in our criminal justice system. And the Suffolk County DA's office, prior to Rachel Rollins, who is a dear friend and amazing district attorney. Prior to her, insisted on continuing to try this case. It's only eight episodes. I really hope you guys would watch it. I'd love to come back, talk to you after you watch it. But one, so I want to just make a couple of quick points. Yes, my letter called for the defunding of police and we wanted to see sharp cuts to police overtime. We still want to see that. Much of that language is, is, is embedded in police contracts. And so it's not just a budget conversation we need to have. We need to have a conversation about the, the negotiations between the police department or this particular union and, and management. So there's an opportunity there. The other, the second thing is we need to reimagine how we respond to crisis. We should not be calling the police for every single crisis in our city. If there is a person on the street who's dealing with substance use disorder and struggling with that, we need to make sure that we've got recovery specialists that can help that person. If somebody is on the street who's homeless and someone's calling the police because they think that person has been a nuisance, we need to make sure we've got housing specialists who can deal with that, that. So we put an unfair burden on police, number one. The other thing, the third thing I would say, and this is why we need to look at that money and we need to look at how we reimagine, is we've got to understand the history of policing. And the history of policing is, is that we needed to build up and beef up public safety because of what was being done in this country. And that was quite frankly, we were stealing, stealing land and we were stealing people. And then we had to keep all of that in order or the people who were in power had to keep that some sort of order. And God forbid an enslaved person fight for their freedom. And well, guess what? We've got to organize police who are now going to be slave catchers for people who have been enslaved. That's the history of policing in our country. So we've got to acknowledge that and we've got to deal with that. And we've got to, when we understand that, we know that just pouring more and more money into policing isn't making people feel safer. And it's not getting, getting the results that anyone wants to see. You didn't ask about mass incarceration, but policing has been very complicit in that. The criminalization of black and brown folks and using police as a way to kind of go round people up and get them engaged in the criminal justice system has been part of the problem. I'm not against community policing. I think Boston does have a unique model that, that has been used across the nation, but that is not going to solve our issues of mass incarceration or what is fundamentally wrong with our criminal justice system.
Yeah, this, those are really wonderful points. And, and, you know, we, you know, on your point of, you know, how communities of color experience the police, we had Rod Brunson, who is a professor of criminology here at Northeastern and has written about policing in Boston, talked to us on Friday. And this was one of his points, he did a piece in the Washington Post over the summer, talked, sort of explaining that, that the double bind that communities of color are in with, in terms of the police, which is that they want effective policing, right? They want, they want to be able to trust the police in order to have safer communities and to be able to cooperate with the communities when there is crime, right? Because the problem is, is that if the, if people don't feel that, that, that the police are going to save, to keep them safe, then they're not going to cooperate them, with them when there are problems. But, but the way that, you know, communities of color are experiencing the police on a daily basis is negative, right? And so that, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the, the, in, in his view, the challenges that police face is in trust-building and, and ineffective policing as well, right? Not just policing more, but policing more effectively, which I think is your point as well, right? And so that's really, really important issues. I just want to give Alexa LaRue a chance to, oh, and thank you for that. I, I don't know how, I don't know how I missed it. I watched, I watched a few episodes of City on a Hill. And I talked about, I talked about the Fiasco podcast. Did you listen to the Leon Neyfakh Fiasco podcast? That, that's, that's quite good. It's called, there's this podcast and the, the third season is on resistance to integration in Boston. And it's really quite well done. You, you get to sort of hear some of the-
Can you drop the link?
Can I send it to you after just so I-
Yeah, even better. That's even better.
Yeah, it's-
I won't get it out of this link.
It's really well done. And, but thank you. I, I, you know, this is, this is great. Now, we all have our watching and they have one more, one more, more assignment left. So maybe I will incorporate that into it to give them a, to incentivize watching it. Alexa, did you want to ask a question? Alexa LaRue?
Yes. Hi, I'm Alexa. So my question for you was, what has your favorite memory you've made as big president of the Boston City Council or like your favorite experience that you've had so far?
I don't, that's a tough one. Favorite. I'm getting tripped up with favorite, I guess. It's nothing what I imagined.
Tough one.
Like literally five weeks in, you know, I had to shut the council down for COVID, like so. And then like five weeks after that, we were, you know, reeling from the murder of George Floyd. You know, I think for me, what is- You know, I think for me, what is encouraging is. The way that community is coming together and how um. Different electors have come together to, to, to address this, that this is, this is. This is not just a moment in our nation's history. This is a pivotal time. To, to um, try to right wrongs, to repair the harm, to set a different course. Um, so. I, I take a lot of, I guess, comfort in, in knowing that. That we are, that we have an opportunity before us to do something different. And I think that people are, are taking that serious and are trying to do just that, so.
So just showing.
There are a lot of things that I wanted to do as council president, you know, a lot of fun, favorite things that I have been able to do. Um, you know, I really wanted to kind of open up the council presidency in a way, like I think there's this. Mystique around it and like a lot of people haven't been in the office of the, of the council president. Like I, you know, had, was going to ho- hold uh. Uh, open house, have open houses and have kind of these regular office hours. We, I wanted to bring council meetings into the district. Um, right now, all council meetings are twelve o'clock noon at City Hall, period. Sometimes we have city council hearings out in the community. And sometimes we have those at night, but not meetings. So in what I did as council president. Is I built into our rules, the ability to have these city council meetings. Um, every now and again in city council districts, so there are nine districts at night. We weren't able to do that because of course, everything is remote.
That's a fantastic idea though. I mean, people who work, you know, nobody's going to make it to, to downtown at noon. I mean, you'd have to take a day off, et cetera. So that's a great idea.
Well, hopefully we'll be able to do it. We just weren't able to do it because of COVID, the COVID shutdown. But I think it is very important that we create opportunities and make sure that, that city government is as accessible. As it can be uh, for folks and it hasn't been. So whatever we can do, whatever I can do to, to do that. We've also focused a lot on language access. So um.
Yeah, I wondered, did, did uh, just quickly to add to, did COVID? The um, to sort of move to Zoom open accessibility, did they, did that help in open?
Yeah, in some ways, yes, but in other ways, no. So I think that, you know, one of the things that we will take. With us post-COVID are the different lessons and ways that, that we found uh, we could be. Um, so working more from home, there's no reason why people can't work more from home. How do we make sure that we have much more flexible working space post-COVID? I think that's a great thing to think about. Um, it's important to acknowledge while some folks have internet connection, aren't, are very savvy about how to use. Different apps like Zoom, there are other folks who aren't. There are, there are other folks who really count on being able to march down to City Hall. And show up and let, let their city council and know how they feel about something. And that person may not be able to easily transition to um, remote. So uh, in some ways it's very helpful and other ways, just depends.
Yeah, it's, it's funny, um, but I, you know, I have a friend who, who's a vice principal at, at one of the BPS middle, middle schools. So um, in the spring, you know, when things online, went online, he was spending days. Delivering Chromebooks to people in their homes. And I mean, one of the things that, you know, sort of. The reality that, that shocked him was just how many people in the city don't have access to internet. Um, or don't have access, you know, are sharing, have no computers or sharing, sharing one BPS Chromebook between an entire house. So that's, that's a really great point. Caitlin Stone has a question for you.
Um, hi. So I know you mentioned um, that the city council is super diverse, which is amazing. So I wanted to ask, do you think making the police force more diverse can help with the issues that we're facing today?
Absolutely. Yes. It's one of the things that I um, you know, have, have fought for. Uh, even before becoming a city councillor, you know, diversity of a police force, diversity of our, you know, teachers. Et cetera. I think that is very important, but it's not enough. It's not enough. There needs to be structural change.
Great question, Caitlin. Ryder?
Hello, uh, I'm Ryder. Um, I was just wondering.
I was just gonna say, thank you for um, uh, for putting that there and I'm gonna download.
Yeah, I shared the letter, the five-page letter to the mayor, which highlights a bunch of, it's, there are a lot of budgetary asks. This was right before our budget vote and a number of us voted against that budget because it didn't go far enough. Um, but it's also legislative items in there, uh, as well as just advocacy. Sorry about that Ryder, I just shared the letter that I had referenced when I was speaking with Michael.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I will, I will download that and upload it to Canvas, so, so everybody has it on our, on our class site.
So Ryder, you wanted to ask a question?
Okay, um, so I was just curious as to if you thought that representing your community has changed your perception of it? And if so, how?
Ooh, that's a good question. I don't think it's changed my perception. I think you have even a deeper insight. Um, because you are in contact uh, with different constituents, they. Uh, you know, people let you know how, how they feel. Um, you know, before I was a city councillor, nobody was sending me emails to tell me what they thought about a project. You know, up the street. And so I think you're just, you have much more opportunity to, to be. Engaged with residents on a whole host of issues. And I, I'll say this, in case I don't get a chance to say it later. That is so important, making sure that we are bringing folks in. Uh, to solve these very complicated, complex challenges in our city, because it's not like the thirteen of us. Can do it alone. It's not like the mayor can do it by himself. We, you've got to do that. Uh, in partnership with folks uh, in community who care about these issues, who are working on these issues. The two city council hearings I mentioned um, earlier that we had yesterday. Both of those city council hearings had lots of advocates who had been really working on uh, these issues. So it takes all of us. Thank you.
President Janey, a serious question. Do you watch Park, or did you watch Parks and Rec?
I didn't, but I think I missed out on a, on a. Oh, classic favorite here. It might be something I'm always in the market for a good binge.
Well, you know, I, I don't know if people, I, I felt that that was Ryder's question was a question shaped by uh, by, by Parks and Rec, but it's.
But I think a lot of people like that show. It's one, like The Office. The Office is another show, another great show that I didn't watch. But I know I missed out on a probably a really good show that I might go back and binge one day.
Ah, but the, the Parks and Rec, I think will um, will affect you more. In the sense of the experiences of this particular city um. City rep, she was, she actually becomes a city council representative, but at the beginning she works in the uh, the Parks Department. But her whole thing is also about accessibility. So there are a lot of um, a lot of hearings and meetings. Where, with, with constituents voicing their, you know, their.
I'm, I'm living that life, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't know, maybe hit too close to home, but uh, but that's what I thought, I thought, I thought of.
I'll be in the supermarket and I'll get somebody's two cents on something, either a challenge or problem to solve or an idea. And you know, you get it no matter where you are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna share with you.
Very local issues too, probably stop signs and, you know, and uh, and, and local schools and things that really affect people. Uh, um, in the neighborhood, I'm sure, which is, which is I'm sure why you, you know, why you went into it. So that's great. Um, Priya, you had a question?
Um, yes, so I have a question regarding um, like healthcare. So I see like on your website that it said um, that you're, one of your main issues is addressing. Health disparities among black and Latino residents because um, like we know that. There is much, much of a divide in the economic. Economic aspect between um, residents of color and um, white counterparts. So do you think that the distribution of the COVID vaccine? Um, is going to be a role, is going to affect like who gets the vaccine because like. Um, depending on a person, if it's a person of color or a white counterpart?
Great question. Um, so. In my district, so I represent, I'm the president of the council, the entire council, the city of Boston, but District Seven.
Where many of you will live, but I'm sure by the way.
It's Roxbury, South End, Dorchester and Fenway. So Northeastern is in District Seven. If you live near Northeastern, you most likely live uh, in my district. District Seven is home to, to many of the disparities in the city of Boston. That, that I ran to office to try to, to tackle. It is home to a thirty-year life expectancy gap from Grove Hall to Symphony Hall. That's in District Seven. So yes, uh, health disparities, we need to tackle those. And in fact, COVID nineteen has shown a light for all to see. Uh, of, of how we have not done everything that we need to do to ensure that everyone has access to good. Quality, affordable healthcare. We know that this is an issue. It's an issue nationally. It was a huge issue in the presidential race. In Boston, we have declared public health or racism, a public health uh, issue. And that is, that's true. In terms of vaccine, critically important. That, that we ensure. That people in Boston, particularly black and brown communities that you mentioned, Priya. Have access to the vaccine and confidence in the vaccine. And so it's not enough just to have access if people don't want to take it. There is a long history in this country. Of how medical institutions, universities, governments. Have abused the trust. Of, of those they're supposedly serving. And we can look at Tuskegee, we can look at the, the exploitation of Henrietta Lacks. We can look more recently, our, our recent history of Flint, Michigan. And how the government poisoned the black community there. So it's not a surprise if people have questions or concerns about taking a vaccine. Uh, because they have seen too often. Where government has not had their best interest in heart. That being said, my role as president of the council. And as a District Seven councillor, where there's a thirty-year life expectancy gap in my district. I want to make sure that black and brown folks have access to and confidence in. So we need to, and thankfully, we've got a new administration. Coming um, so that we can have much more faith in that, in the rollout. Uh, so we've got to make sure that, that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Is, is on the list and the city of Boston is on the list of making sure that we get the vaccine. And that there is a, a good plan for rollout here. But that plan has to include uh, rebuilding some trust and making sure that people have confidence in this vaccine.
That's a great, great question, Priya. President Janey, do you have time for one more student question?
Absolutely.
Great, so, so I'll give one, and if you have a little bit more time after that, I'll ask one more question. But, but then, then I promise to let you go. So the last student question goes to Sarah Tadawis.
Hello, I'm Sarah. Thank you so much for coming to our class today. Um, my question is, can you explain a little bit about the school-to-prison pipeline? In Boston's school system, what role police play in it? And how um, either you worked or other legislators have worked to dismantle it, either in the past or plans to dismantle it? I know it's a really long question for a last question.
No, these are great questions.
I didn't pre-screen them.
And I don't know, were you guys like following all of our hearings this week? This is just perfect.
They're very engaged. They're very engaged.
Great, um, so. Mass incarceration is real and our schools have been complicit. That, that's what the school-to-prison pipeline is. Um, it, it, it has been the criminalization of black and brown students. That, that doesn't just happen in our streets with police, it happens in our schools. And it happens because our schools um, have now brought police into our schools as well. So their, their, our school officials are bringing police in. Matters that back when I, back in my day, back in my day, when I was in school. Um, discipline matters were handled by the school. You uh, had to write on the chalkboard. I will not talk in class. I will not chew gum in class. Maybe you had to stay after school. Maybe you had to go to the principal's office. Maybe they called your parents. But what didn't happen is um, you, they didn't call the police. Um, so now uh, we see what is happening. And it's not just our schools, mass incarceration, like again, watch trial four, read uh, the new Jim Crow. Uh, there, there's so many things, but school-to-prison pipeline is real. In Boston, before I even became a city councillor, was very active on this issue when I was working at Massachusetts Advocates for Children. In fact, MAC is the organization that got the state law passed. That says exclusion from school has to be a last resort. So too many schools were taking students and suspending them. Uh, and uh, you know, expelling them and not letting them participate with their peers in, in the classroom. And, and that is a problem. That also contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline. Yesterday, we just had a city council hearing on an ordinance. That I've introduced with Counsel Wu and Counsel Arroyo. That would provide oversight around information sharing uh, with our schools and the Boston Police Department. The school committee recently passed something that doesn't go far enough. And that there are several instances where. Students, and again, I want to say, I'm going to stop saying students, I'm going to say children, because that's who we're talking about. Um, are getting caught up in the criminal justice system. So the ordinance would make sure that there are, that there is really a firewall between. What happens in a school and the Boston Police Department. Right now, reports can be written about students for all kinds of things. For behavior that is not criminal behavior, it could be based on the colors that they're wearing. It could be based on who their friends are. And somehow you can wind up in the Boston Police Department's gang database. Based on these reports. These reports are often generated in our schools, which is why I've introduced this ordinance. And it is one way, one way that we dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline. There are lots of other things that we need to do, but that's a great question. Thank you so much, Sarah.
That was a really, really great and important question, Sarah, and, and, and really fascinating answer, President Janey. I, I mean, all of students, all of you ask great questions and thank you so much. So my la, the question I, I was going to end with was, was going to be about. Uh, what opportunities you see within, within the city um, and the future of Boston. Um, but the question I want to ask. And if you have time, you can answer, answer the first question second, which is, is about, you know, opportunities in the city and, and, and for the future. But um, uh, but my sec, answer my second question first, please. Which is, you know, at, at the very beginning, you talked about um. Uh, what Northeastern as an institution could or should be doing differently. Um, and I, I would like to, I, I'm actually fairly new to Northeastern. Um, I, I've only, I've taught here for a year and I was at, at Boston University for ten years before coming here. Um, and so I'm still learning the, the sort of institutional culture here. Um, and I, I would love to know what, what should Northeastern um, as an institution be doing differently?
Thank you for that. Um. And I want to again, say that this isn't about the students at Northeastern who I hope are getting a world-class education. And I know that Northeastern does provide that.
But they have an opportunity to participate.
They have an opportunity and beyond that, I believe they have a responsibility. So Northeastern just looks very different than it looked when my father was at Northeastern. Northeastern uh, and, and other universities look different as well. Uh, UMass, you know, UMass, Northeastern, even Wentworth. These were institutions that were very much focused on Boston kids. And, and folks who lived in Boston. These institutions are now world-class institutions and they attract students from all over the world and that's a great thing. Though I do think that there still needs to be some focus on Boston. And helping kids that are coming up through Boston Public Schools. And so I'd love to see more programming around helping Boston Public School students. Make their way to Northeastern University. That's one. Pilot. Pilot, that's payment in lieu of taxes. That is the voluntary agreement that the city of Boston has with its nonprofit partners. That's universities, that's hospitals, and that's museums. All of the nonprofit partners who are not required to pay property tax. There, there's a lot of money that is being left on the table through this voluntary arrangement. Uh, because people are not being asked to pay the full amount, so that's one thing. It's a voluntary arrangement and people are only being asked to pay a quarter of what that assessed value would be. And a quarter of that assessed value, right now, the assessed value. And a quarter of that assessed value, right now, the assessed value is an old assessed value and that's not Northeastern's fault. That's the city of Boston's fault, so I'm working on that end. But right now, the assessed value is half cash payment, half community benefit. Northeastern is falling short on paying its cash payment. Northeastern tries to say that its community benefits are enough and they don't have to pay the cash payment amount or that they somehow have already paid it. I don't have those numbers here, but if you guys are really interested and want to do something, because this, here's where the opportunity comes. Question around the opportunity is really students of Northeastern, you know, taking this up and holding the institute, institution accountable.
Yeah, you have power.
Exactly. And so that's one thing. The third thing I would say is just in terms of how we, how we interact with each other in our city. I hear, to the Parks and Rec reference from constituents all the time, one of the things I hear from constituents are complaints about you guys. And it may not be the folks on this Zoom. It might not even be Northeastern students.
Everybody but these people.
It could be another, it could be Wentworth, it could be Wentworth, it could be other institutions. But students move into neighborhoods. And, you know, for, for, for residents, there's often this us against them. I think that's a false choice. It doesn't have to be that. I think, I've lived near young people, you know, on my street, there, there is a house that was a city year house for, for years. I think young people can be great neighbors, are great neighbors. I think part of the challenge is, is the neighbor part. You know, people have to talk to each other. So building those relationships in your surrounding communities, particularly when you are not living on Northeastern's campus but are in, out in neighborhoods, just being part of those neighborhoods could be, could be helpful. And, and I think it gives you, you know, better insight to the city of Boston, certainly helps you in, in, in your courses. And then hopefully gives you a reason, if you're not from the city of Boston, a reason to want to stay and to be long-term citizens of our great city who, who help shape the city and hold the city accountable. And who knows, run for office one day and, and sit where I'm sitting in the city. So there are a number of ways that Northeastern, as, as an institution, can do better. I didn't even mention Carter's Playground. And Carter's Playground is a public park. But you, I get the calls and complaints. People think it's now part of Northeastern's campus because it's programmed so heavily by Northeastern. You know, it's a wonderful park and the investment from Northeastern.
Less than a block from my, from my office.
Yeah. And the, there was a lot of investment that came from Northeastern to renovate that park. And so I know Northeastern has a vested interest in that, that park and that playground, but it is a public park. And it's another, it's another source of contention. Again, this isn't the students, you guys didn't do this. But it's important for you to understand, particularly if you're living, you know, in the South End or Roxbury, among neighbors, so that you, you understand, I think, some of the, the perceptions that people may have. And then you can cut through that because that's the institution and we need to hold the institution accountable.
Being, being responsible students with, and activist students within Northeastern and being good neighbors within Boston, I cannot think of a better way to end our semester on, and on, and on better words. And, you know, to your point, you know, you are a product of Boston, but actually, a lot of members of the city council and a lot of our Congresswomen came to Boston as students, right? And then moved into these, moved into the neighborhoods and, you know, and became longtime residents and then ran for office too. So whether you are from Boston or you are not from Boston originally, you're going to be here for a bunch of years. So be activist students and, and good neighbors in the city of Boston. And I, and I can't think of a better way to end our semester.
Well, Professor, I'm gonna give you another quote. To quote the great Rakim, and you guys probably don't even know who Rakim is.
I do.
It's not where you're from, it's where you're at. So, and then the final thing I would say is also, just again, around your activism, thank you. People like to talk about future leaders, that you're the leaders of tomorrow. You guys are leaders right now. Young people have always been at the forefront of every cause, of every movement. Thank you for your activism right now and your leadership right now. Thank you.
President, President Janey, thank you so much for joining us. Have a wonderful day and, and good luck with your, with everything within your career. But I think we're going to stay in touch because, you know, you're going to have a new voter soon. I'll be able to, one of, one of the questions on the exam that I had to study for is how can you participate in American democracy? And the acceptable answers are to participate in a political campaign or join a political party. So I, I may have the opportunity to, to live out my, my citizenship exam.
Well, it's been a pleasure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for taking the time. Really appreciate it. Take care.
All right. Take care. Bye-bye.